Wouldn't we all stand for pleasure, leaders? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands by our own right and by our individual and collective responsibility. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to present certificates to our AP Scholars. Nice way to open the meeting. If the school board would like to join us, off to the side, we're going to call your names up. This evening, we recognize the high school students who achieved the status of AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Honor, AP Scholar with Distinction, and National AP Scholar as designated by the College Board. These students that we will call forward tonight are current students in Riverhead High School. In addition to that, we also congratulate the additional 29 students that graduated with the class of 2015. Please come forward. Nico Bosi. Blake Carrera. Richard Pope-Cox. Hunter Fareed. Jessie Goodell. The main factors. Brandon Lynn. Natalie Manuel. Sasha Williams. Ryan Lencini. Amy Lencini. Angela Tereski. Ryan Basquelin. AP Scholar with Erme Expose, Al Alzogas. Haley Bean. Brian Clark. Corinne Drunk. Wenzelin Phillips. And Josanne Knapp, ten today, Zoe Craig. Michael Harris. And two AP Scholars who are stationed at Riverhead tonight, Peter Cook and Joseph Messina. Another round of applause. We'll go home with your award. The optional published agenda motion. Thank you, Ms. Lance, second, Mr. Dorr. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carry. At this time, we have opportunity for members of the community to address the Board of Education for agenda topics only. Please state your name.
South Massapezzo, Calhoun. Item F, approval of award of new contract. Can you tell the public how you faced, given the award, was it on hourly rates plus parts and an additional cost? There's no figure here. How do you determine who to give the contract to?
Mr. Schneider?
There's three factors involved. One is hourly rate for bodywork, one is hourly rate for paint, and one is standard parts cost plus markup.
Thank you. Item G, there's no dollar figure, and it's not clear when you read the resolution whether it's a lease, a rental, or a purchase. The fact that there's renewal for two one-year terms leads me to believe that it's a lease or a rental. Why would we lease or rent a tractor rather than purchase it outright?
Mr. Schneider?
It's work. It's to purchase tractors. There was a state contract for this matter which expired. It wasn't being rebid by the state, so we've created our own bid.
So are we actually purchasing a tractor?
We use the tractor base with various attachments for things like snow removal and other maintenance activities.
Okay, should the resolution then have the purchase price for the item?
Well, there are a number of different types of items available depending on which tractor we end up purchasing.
So first, we have to put the bid out for the...
No, we created a bid with a number of different types of equipment so that we would have some flexibility in terms of what we wanted to purchase based on our needs at the time. We have some older equipment, we have some newer equipment, and we're trying to have a dedicated renewal replacement program so we don't end up with a bunch of old equipment.
Okay, when I read the resolution, it makes it sound like you actually awarded the bid for a four-wheel-drive tractor and accessories, not for, you know, an annual contract to buy tractors or equipment from this particular dealer. That's why you asked the question.
I understand your comments. I understand your concern.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to approve consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Ms. Lance, any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Motion carry. Old business, new business? Oh, I'm sorry. As part of our consent agenda, tonight, we've granted Tracy Martin her tenure. Okay, new business. Approval of call for special meeting of component boards of education. This is for the EBSO C board, and we have been filling in the time on Wednesday, November 18th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. Motion?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carry. Approval of tax... Sorry, tax, levy, and reserve appropriations. So money is for contracts approved by our voters for the Riverhead and Beating Hall free libraries, and the school district's reserve funds was presented to our voters last meeting. Motion? Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Mr. Dorr, any questions? All in favor? Motion carry. Approval of ongoing employees' resolution. Need a motion to approve standards required by Patient and Affordable Care Act. Motion? Mr. Grass, second. Thank you, Ms. Lance, any questions? All in favor? Motion carry. It's that time of year again, we have to adopt 2016-17 budget development calendar. So write calendars. Thank you, Mr. Meyer, second. Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carry. Approval of contracts. Motion to approve an agreement with E-Spark, which is an instructional program pilot last year and continuing this year, and it's accompanied software, also Eastern South EBSO's, uh, for student transportation. Motion? Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carry. Approval of award of new contract. And this is the motion to approve under contract of collision in Island Drive Auto. Motion? Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carry. Approval of bid award. Motion to approve a bid award to farm right for wheel tractor. Motion? Thank you, Ms. Lance, second. Thank you, Mr. Grass. Any questions?
I'd just like to bring up, Mr. Nashville, more of a group this, this, better clarification of the future.
With the language.
Yeah, with the language.
Any other questions? All in favor? Motion carry. Motion to approve a field trip for the high school chamber orchestra and choir and jazz ensembles of Boston this April. Motion? Thank you, Mr. Meyer, second. Thank you, Ms. Lance, any questions? Yes, good one. All in favor? Motion carry. Approval of acceptance of donation. Motion to approve donation from Jamesport Greenhouses of 100 plants, beautiful Montauk daisies, and moms outside of middle school. Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Any comments? Yes, they're very hearty plans. Looks very nice. All in favor? Motion carry. At this time, Ms. Carney.
Thank you. Once a year, we have the opportunity to say thank you to the Board of Education. It's not an easy job that the board has. They put in an awful lot of hours and effort, first learning the position, and then really taking the time and effort to learn everything that they need to learn before making decisions that they have to make as a Board of Education. And I've been working with this board for a long time now, and I just want to say it's just such a pleasure to work with such a group of dedicated and professional people who really help us make the district move forward in a positive direction. And this board has so much to be proud of, for all the accomplishments that you've been a part of over the last few years. And on behalf of the administrative cabinet, we just want to say thank you with a small gift, time of year for moms and flowers, and a little gift certificate for you in a local restaurant. So just want to say thank you very much for all you do. We truly appreciate it. Also, at this time, I'd like to invite up the new president of our Administrators Association, Mr. Thomas Peyton, and our new vice president, Mr. David Enos. They would just like to say a few words. And they treated the board to dinner this evening, and it was quite delicious. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Just really quickly, before we get started, introduce myself as the new president of Ra and Ms. Enos as the new vice president, and just want to say we look forward to working with you and continuing the historically good relationship Ra has enjoyed with the Board of Education. On a second note, we'd like to thank you for all the work you do to support me give our schools and our students, and we were able to hopefully extend that in your dinner this evening, and I hope you enjoyed it. And we'd like to thank Jean Grim, the assistant principal at Riley Avenue, who coordinated that dinner this evening. You'll probably appreciate me not letting Mr. Enos speak. That's my personal thank you to you. But he did want me to say that, him and I did wear matching aprons as we worked all night to put that dinner together for you. Thank you.
The school thing, would you like to...
On behalf of the RCFA, I'd also like to thank you for all your hard work. I know it's often a thankless job, and I want to let you know that we appreciate all that you do. We hope you enjoy your next announcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm putting you on the spot.
Okay, we also just want to say thank you. We appreciate everything that you do, and just do a great job. Thank you so much.
Just want to give one last round of applause to the Board of Education because it truly is an important position, an important job, and there's nothing that, I don't know, there's just not enough words to really convey all of the effort and time that these people put in to be ensure that we have what we need for our students. So thank you once again. Also, our teacher aides also provided a cake to the board, and we thank them as well. And just want to update the board a little bit on some news since our last board meeting. We did have a very beneficial and meaningful conference at NISWA, and I think I'll get six board members attend. It was three days of learning, intensive workshops in New York City, and I appreciate all of the board being there and giving up their family time for a very, very meaningful three days together. We got to know each other very well, and I think that we do work well together, so I enjoyed that time. I just want to say, at this time, we had a wonderful homecoming parade on Saturday and a terrific game, and I want to thank all the high school staff for all the effort, and our athletic department in making that a wonderful success. We had a beautiful day, and everything just went as it should go, especially that we won the game as well. And I just want to congratulate our students at Rowanoke Avenue. They dressed in pink on October 24th to observe breast cancer awareness, and at the high school level, the NJROTC cadets wore pink braids on their dress uniforms at homecoming also to show their solidarity for the fight against breast cancer. The efforts raised about $250 towards the breast cancer support groups, and we really want to thank everyone for participating in this worthy endeavor. On October 23rd, we had thousands of students, actually, volunteers from the East End of Long Island collected data on the iconic estuary. This is a joint effort, and this is being compiled into an official Day in the Life of the iconic Estuary database. And Claire Yanikron, high school earth science class, and John Barona's living and thriving class traveled to Indian Island to collect data. They tested the water pH and temperature, current direction and speed, salinity, the dissolved oxygen level, et cetera, and they're going to be doing data over time so that they can be a part of looking at the health of the iconic estuary and hopefully be a part of looking for solutions to be sure that it remains healthy as we go into the future. The middle school environmental club was also part of the program, and they collected data in the bay via the Atlantis Explorer boat, and they really enjoyed that experience. Also, want to congratulate the winners of our annual Garfield and Langhorn essay contest at Pulaski Street School. As all of us know, PFC Garfield-Langhorn was a Riverhead High School graduate who died heroically in the Vietnam War, and he was awarded the Medal of Honor. The theme of the contest is presented in the form of the question inspired by Garfield-Langhorn's actions, and it is to ask yourself what a person of any age could do to help others. And the essays were really beautifully written, and as the judges mentioned, they get, each year, we have more and more students participate in the essay contest, and the qualities and thoughtfulness of the essays just continues to improve. And I thank our community members who volunteered to judge, and our continued appreciation to the PFC Langhorn's mother and fiancee for making the trip to Riverhead from their homes. They do this each year, and it's quite a trek, and we appreciate them being a part of the ceremony. Also, want to mention that the students in all of our K-8 buildings had a special treat when the Harlan Wizards made an appearance on October 22nd. They shared with the students an interactive anti-bullying presentation, and this is something they do each year and something that the kids truly appreciate, and the message is definitely worth hearing. Also, we had our students with the encouragement of our CAP program social workers, and our Peacemaker Elementary students in the Riverhead Elementary Schools participated in our National Unity Day, and they do this by wearing orange to school, and they did this on October 21st. It's a day that everyone came together to send one large orange message of support, hope, and unity to those who have experienced bullying. And this is a national movement to really get kids to think about bullying, what it is to be a bully, what it is to be bullied, and to really come together to try to put an end to it. Student council members at Riley Avenue gave presentations with an anti-bullying message in each of their classrooms, and students in all of our elementary schools signed a pledge to work against bullying in their school, and we do truly applaud their efforts. And this needs to be ongoing, and it is one of our goals as a school to be sure that we're putting that message out to our students. Just want to end with some sports news. We want to congratulate our varsity girls' boys' country cross-country teams. They had a very good showing in Manhattan in Brown University Invitational meets. Megan Kelbasa is an eighth grader on the varsity girls' cross-country team. She won the freshman race at Brown with a near-record time. Her time on the two-and-a-half-mile course was 15 minutes 17 seconds, and that's the second-best time since 1999, so we congratulate her on that very significant accomplishment. We also want to congratulate the girls' field hockey team who made the playoffs, and although they did lose their first game, they've had a really great season, and this has been for now a number of years in a row, and we applaud them, and the coaches and the students. And then just a couple upcoming events. This Saturday, October 31st, at 8:30 a.m., we have the Riverhead Running Club, which is a not-for-profit organization, is doing a trick-or-trot, run-or-walk, walk. And this is really just to promote interest in running, track and field, walking, and cross-country, and in Riverhead and the surrounding areas, and they're going to host this first annual trick-or-trot 5K and fun run on October 31st at the high school, and the proceeds will go in part to student athlete scholarships. And then also, the Harlan Wizards game is going to, sales officially open on October 5th, and the date is going to be November 12th at 6:45 in the high school gymnasium. This event has raised over $20,000 so far for senior scholarships, so we thank the RCFA for organizing this very fun event. It's terrific to watch. Tickets do go quickly, so I urge you to buy tickets in advance. And then just want to end with saying for any Mets fans, enjoy the game tonight, and it should be a exciting first game.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Okay, opportunity for board members.
I'd also like to thank all of our staff here in the district. Being a board member makes me very proud to work with all of you to basically make the kids the best that we can, so thank you for, thank you to everybody for everything. This is really, it's a cool night. We get gifts and flowers. I love yellow munks, too, by the way, but it's really about the kids, and I think we're all working in that same goal to try and, you know, promote them to the best of their abilities, so thank you for that. Also, I just want to bring up, we, we mentioned the one person for tenure just in our consent agenda. We did have a retirement, Mary Ann... Bear with me one second. Stoico? Yeah, she was a computer lab assistant, so just wanted to point out, just mentioned her name, good luck on her retirement, and I'm sure we'll be seeing her when we compile everybody together, so I just wanted to mention her tonight. The last thing, Ms. Carney mentioned about us going to the NISWA conference. I spent a lot of time focusing on facilities and renewable energy and all that, and I did sit in on a few classes about solar. There is a program out there that was put together by the New York Power Authority. It's called K to Solar. We basically can just sign up on the website, we can register. They come down, they can do a whole analysis for us. I think I'd like to ask the board for backing that, maybe we ask Ms. Carney or Mr. Schneider to register that, and it's snow-cost for us for somebody to come down. I think right now is a great opportunity for us. All our roofs are new, and the good part about it is all the solar panels that would be mounted or mounted are, they don't penetrate through. It was a pretty cool program. They said it was put together by the New York State Power Authority, so it's not just a, you know, a company that's, you know, down some side road somewhere, so I think it's worth us looking into, the possibility of going solar in all our buildings. I don't know what we'll get out of it, but for somebody to come for free and let us know, I think we'd be foolish not to think about it. So if we could have everybody's backing on that for us to kind of move forward with that. Thank you. For those of us that were there, I was pretty excited about everything I learned and found out. out there's quite a few other districts, you know, within a stone's throw of us that are getting ready to do the program too, and I think it's pretty impressive what the power authority put together. And so that's that. I look forward to finding out some more details about that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thanks to everybody for all the gifts. That's really nice. October's a great month along with breast cancer observance, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I understand, Mr. Payton, it was your kids who wore pink? Yes. I'm sorry?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow. Okay, I'm sorry. Try not to get too emotional here, but I personally really appreciate that. Back in the '70s, when I was nine years old and I was told my mother had breast cancer, it was devastating. So it really means a lot that those kids are growing up knowing how important it is to fight this fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunity for our RCFA. Opportunity for members of the community. Your agenda items. Yes. Yes.
Don Thompson, I have a question in regards to copy of the teachers' contract that I had to foil. Is this posted on the website, the district website? Is there a way to have this posted on it? Because I know other districts have this clearly posted on their websites.
Actually, you can get the contract on C2NewYork as well. All contracts are posted.
Right, but it should not be foiled, it should be readily available.
It's available on C2NewYork.
On the website?
Yeah, on C2NewYork website, it is.
I must have missed it. What link should I click on? What part of it?
If you go to C2NewYork, there's a place where you can click on either administrative contract or teacher contract.
Okay.
If you want to stop by the district office, I'm happy to show you.
Another question I have is, are there amendments? The contract? Usually there are, right?
The contract that was given to you is the newly signed contract, so it has all the amendments included in it. Everything is in there.
I know I sent an email to Mr. Schneider. I don't know if he's in the process yet. Getting that together?
Go ahead. I said all the amendments are in there, but what exactly are you looking for?
I didn't hear a response back, so I don't know.
Ms. Thompson, I think it's... I emailed you. We're having a little problem with my emails.
Yeah, I don't know if I just understood it. Instead, you said that something about it being duplicative, but I left this thing again, I didn't see amendments.
Well, okay, so to clarify, and I know you've been writing to me and I've been writing to you, and then days after I sent my email to you, it comes back as being undeliverable. Previous amendments to the contract are incorporated into the contract at the next settlement. I'm happy to get you copies of, I think you asked me for amendments in the last 10 years. I'm happy to provide those to you, and as I indicated in my email to you, which you may not have received, the staff at the district office and the process gathering those together sent to you. They're going to be largely duplicative to what you have in your hand, because as we're saying, when amendments to the contract happen, the next time you print the whole thing, they're incorporated into the agreement. But, you know, we're gathering to get them together, and I'll provide them to you soon as reduction.
Yeah, I know, since we signed on October 12th. So, yeah.
That's why... The point was, and I think Mr. Schneider had said to you that we were waiting to get that final draft to you, because it does have everything in it that has been agreed upon.
Obviously, the board voted on the contract. Is there a way to say who voted for, who extended?
It would be in a board resolution.
Under resolution, on board docs?
It would be on the resolution when it was brought to the board. We can find that for you.
Okay. Thank you. I'll address it at the next minute, but I did find those codes that I watched you at the previous meeting. Next minute, I'll address. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. All in favor? Thank you, thank you. Have a great night.